We got it yet?
There's no signal.
We'll give you a second. How's coming out? How's good? All redone?
Oh, yeah.
No, not according to how we're here for task. They have any splits.
Work in progress.
It's still not finished.
Yeah, stop by.
Yeah, I want to see the barn.
It's clean.
That's how.
The barn.
One of the horse don't bite yet.
All right. So welcome, everybody, and we will start as per usual with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so we roll call Dave Hemmland, chair of select board.
Marla Harris, longly believed.
And for announcements, I don't have too much specific, though I do want to make one announcement for a call out and say thank you very much to our school system and our moderator. They are going to be holding a mock election as part of a civics training class with the, I believe it's fifth and sixth graders. My people looking at it right here and doing it in the hall using all of the standard elections processes and showing them how it all works. It is because of the teachers and people like our moderator making that happen that we are very happy and proud to have a highly active and involved set of citizens here in Webster. We hope that that continues going forward. Do we have any other announcements?
I wanted to announce that we will be closed this Friday, November 10th, for Veterans Day. Thank you for giving it off. And also, I got an email from Huffington wanting to arrange with you a time to meet to talk about the transfer station budget. They've given two dates, Monday, the 13th, which is a week from today at 6:30, or the 20th at 5:00, which is hour before your normal meeting.
I will be here or there?
Well, they've said there's a Zoom option available. Frankly, I think it's better to be in the same room myself.
Okay.
But no, I haven't gotten that far.
And do they have a meeting that night or could they come here?
I think they're meeting tonight, so maybe I'll ask if they can come here.
I mean, if that, I don't know if that works for anybody else, but I'd rather do it.
Yeah, so far we've been alternating, so.
Yeah, it'd be our turn.
Are you thinking the 13th? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I was thinking, I was, yes, well, yeah, 5:30, yeah.
Oh, you mean the 20th at 5:00?
Yes, right, that's what I was thinking.
Oh.
What do you think? Does 5:30 work for you?
I think they're probably, if it's here, that's fine, but I think they're probably going to have a meeting and only want to zoom on the 20th.
I'd rather have it on the 20th because my birthday's on the 13th.
Oh.
Well, so we can't do it.
So if they did, I mean, a Zoom meeting is not the end of the world.
Happy birthday, here's a transfer station.
As long as Russ is here, I can't figure that out.
Okay, we could, we could consider doing that on the 20th.
Okay.
Yeah, and we should invite them here for it.
All right, I'll let you know what my result is.
Okay. Any further announcements? Any announcements from our chiefs? All right.
Not until we get to the budget.
So that brings us to our first appointment, which is Pillsbury Lake District regarding road paving and chickens.
Yes, hello.
Please come on down.
Excellent. This is my first time being with you folks. How are you?
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We've got chairs, it's fine?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't mind standing. You can sit.
And you are Mr. Palmer?
My name is Andrew Palmer. Yes, I'm 61, Rumford Drive. I'm the chair commissioner of the PLBD Board down in Pillsbury Lake, just down this way here. A couple of hot topics. I sent a couple of emails. I'm glad we get to reach out. I appreciate you guys giving us the time here. First topic is to clarify chicken enforcement in Pillsbury Lake Village District. So in the past, there was an HOA, and the HOA had rules prohibiting chickens on our properties. But the HOA is dissolved and now with Pillsbury Lake Village District, and we do have citizens on either side of the discussion, and I'd like to just present it to our guys, our citizens, community members on either side of the discussion on having chickens and not having chickens. I'd like to just give them a clear answer from kind of top-down approach and say, hey, select board said X, I'm happy to go with X. But we can, if there's pushback, we can go from there, but I'd like to just be on the same page with you folks.
Sure. I guess I will summarize where we've understood this to have happened in the past, and then I'll open it up for whatever else should be said, because I'm not the end all be all. The, so Pillsbury Lake Village, just as you have noted, had an HOA, and the HOA was formed with a combination of the HOA in charge and various deed restrictions in place that go along with the property deeds. For zoning purposes, which is where the town is now involved instead of the HOA for several things, we, you are not zoned agricultural such as the rest of Webster is. So that does not, by definition of zoning, say that they can do things like chickens.
I see. Okay, that's a good point.
The interesting aspect then becomes, because you're zoned residential and your deed restrictions, but not the zoning, say that you are not allowed to have chickens, we can't, as the town, say, we're going to go after you because you have a chicken. There may be something there if, like, okay, you have a flock of 100 chickens. You're trying to be a chicken breeding farm. That's definitely agriculture. There might be something in zone enforcement there. If it's you have a few chickens, they're probably your pets or your hobbies. So at that point, that's not the town. It is still against the deed restrictions, so the neighbors that would be affected may have case and grounds for legal action.
Because.
But that is not the town.
And then as far as enforcement, although it's against the deed, it wouldn't necessarily be Pillsbury Lake Village District. I mean, like, we're going to send Malika with a bat, like, go get these chickens, I guess, as far as enforcement. If folks are asking, it's not so much that there's hundreds of chickens. I believe the issue is just that there's chickens next to the residential road, fast traffic, chickens going back and forth, and a couple of roosters here and there. But as far as how, if a community member is asking for us to take care of an issue, it's like, ah, well, we're really.
The, my understanding, and please, and Russ can probably provide some more context, but he's not here right now. He's on vacation today. The, my understanding is that any of those citizens with concerns can look at the deed restrictions that are there and take legal action to have that pursued. Anything that would be enforcement should come out of that action, but that's not the town.
It wouldn't, yeah.
It might be a court saying, hey, this has to happen, and then the police could help enforce it, depending on what it is or whether they're supposed to be involved or not, but.
But if I can push the message, just have everybody get along, it's not kind of rubbing you. I mean, you guys don't have a particular stance, so if I can try and say, like, hey, get rid of that rooster, and then this guy won't have a problem. You guys won't say, hey, we can't have any chickens.
Yeah, our stance would generally be that your deed restrictions are your deed restrictions, and you should do them. But that's typically civil matter, not municipal.
So if I may, I'm sorry, didn't get to introduce myself. I'm Michael Malika. I am also a commissioner. And I think part of the reason that we're here is that the whole question of this chickens situation over the summer, whatever, is symbolic of our inability to enforce in our area. And that's, I think, brought more broadly, more concerning to us, because you wind up in other situations, such as people intending to place mobile homes or, you know, trailers on lots down in PLBD, which, under the HOA, would not have been allowed. But now, here we are, HOA is dissolved, we have no enforcement. And so in being a component of Webster now, from that, I don't even know how to phrase it, from that restriction point of view, it's like, well, wait a minute, who do we go to? How do we get enforcement? How do we get some teeth? And, I mean, seriously, if somebody's got roosters, a couple of doors down that are crowing 24/7, you actually have to go to court over this? That's, that's what's concerning. And so backing this up to midsummer, what we did is we reached out to you folks for enforcement on the chicken question and found that the police department and, please correct me if I'm wrong in any respect, was not willing to enforce because they found a few chickens, whatever, but, but these neighbors had built this little quonset hut full of chickens and roosters that are crowing all the time. Now, you know what? Dismissed the roosters. It's how do we get enforcement for our formerly deed restrictions that with a dissolved HOA, we have no teeth, we have no enforcement body, yet somehow it falls outside the purview of the town? And so that's, I think, really the bigger question that we're trying to bring to a head at a more, you know, strategic and cogent level to really understand. And I think it's something that we ought to work to cure at a more general level from a legal and deed and whatever else perspective, so that if we have to call the police, they say, yep, you're part of Webster. I can do this for you, not, well, wait a minute, you've got this on your deed, but it's, it's way too confusing. We need some clarity.
So again, the, the problem is that deed restrictions generally are a civil thing, except when there is an HOA. And the real problem was that your HOA dissolved. And the HOA was a corporation. They are the ones that got the deed restrictions and the ability to subdivide and to create Pillsbury Lake in its entirety. And so to then force all of the enforcement into the town instead of as paid for and taken care of and managed by the HOA is also not fair to the rest of Webster. I'm not saying that there's no way that things can work going forward. There are several things that we have taken over from the HOA, for example, doing zoning enforcement for the different setbacks and so on and so forth. And the, we have the chair here of the planning board. The planning board handles what they expect and suggest for zoning board, uh, sorry, for zoning and that ordinance to be in place. And so if there's a change that should happen for residential, which I believe the only place that is currently listed as residential is Pillsbury Lake, the, maybe there's some up around the other lakes because of small lots as well. But in any case, there may be something to look at there that would change something. But you're still going to run into the same, for example, with the chickens, you're still going to run into, is it somebody's hobby or is it a commercial business? If it's somebody's hobby, we still can't really do much, as long as there are within setbacks and so on. The second thing that I would point out regarding, because you mentioned roosters and constantly crowing, there are, there's no noise ordinance in town. There is no statewide noise ordinance per se. There are some that are against the general civility, sort of like very vaguely worded things. But again, unless you're somebody setting off a cannon multiple times every day next to your neighbors and they don't like it, it's probably not something that we can just send the police to go enforce.
Sure.
And, yeah.
And so I so much appreciate this, and, and the fact is, we're using this whole question of the chickens just as a catalyst to a bigger conversation. So we have, we, again, now as a defunct HOA have no authority to forbid mobile homes being introduced to lakefront properties, which I don't think is to the benefit of anyone. Or, for instance, there were a couple others that came up to discussion recently.
Well, just mobile homes in general, too. But, but, but I do see your point. I mean, the discussion is that it's a residential area, so there could be a zoning discussion. If we motivate the folks of Pillsbury Lake being one of the main residential areas in Webster, we could have the discussion on the back end, maybe we get the residential zoning, that trimmed up. You got to get a lot of motivation for folks to get together to actually do this, but that's our avenue to try and put something in writing and hard writing to say, hey, this is what we'd like to do here. And then we could see how strict we can actually get while talking with the zoning, the leader of the zoning board and all that.
The planning board.
The planning board, see, the planning board and all that, and see how actually restrictive or how concrete we can actually make rules, being that we'd be the majority of the residential zone in Webster at a zoom. Yeah, so that's what we can bring back, is that that's where the discussion can happen, is that it's in the residential. Not to kick it down the road, but, hey, you guys can kind of trim it out there, but, and then it's something written hardcore. You know what I mean? Then it's something actually be written down and you can talk to it guys about it.
Craig Fornier, what's the chances that you guys could reconstitute the HOA?
I was going to ask that, too.
Hey, well, they're talking, the whole, I don't want to put this on America, but the other side of that's more likely at this point. They're trying to dissolve the district. They're trying to have Webster buy, I mean, you guys probably heard that for the last five years now. Please buy us. I'm personally against it myself, but the other side of the discussion is more likely, to be honest. But reconstituting the HOA, I don't know if that alleviates some of the responsibilities with the dam, and maybe that can fall on Webster. It'd be a whole other discussion, but.
I mean, that would be you guys taking control?
Yeah.
That's a good point, yeah, and then we have a, not to use the term, but then we have our own police force, our own enforcement.
Well, you have your own each way.
Tickets or whatever is, tickets, yeah, yeah, tickets and all that. It's a good point. That's something to bring back. I just, I feel the pushback already. I can ask them. It's worth discussion.
And while it's not this discussion, and just because you brought it up, and I've heard it several times having, having sat here, many people in Pillsbury Lake Village District, in the past at least, were under the misassumption that if they dissolved the district, they wouldn't have Pillsbury Lake Village District taxes, they wouldn't have to deal with anything, they wouldn't have to deal with the water system, and Webster would take care of it. That's not true. If they dissolve, all they do is cede the ability to make decisions about it. The tax overlay and the village district, the, the tax overlay and the locations all still stay the same. The town can still continue to charge anything that is needed for said tax overlay and would most likely, because we're not the experts and not putting in the extra time, most likely hire somebody to take care of all of the water. And they would say, this is how it's done, this is how much percent is going to be taken out of taxes. Everyone in the district is going to foot the bill for this company, these people, these plans and all of this. So probably all of the taxation goes up and you have no control.
Yeah.
If you decide to dissolve the district.
Unless we got a super motivated group of commissioners on the town level to run Pillsbury Lakes, village districts, water supply from the town level, and then as volunteers, similar to what we do now, but.
Well, there would still be the tax overlays.
Oh, yeah, cost money, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, but, yeah, that's ours.
So really, the only thing that you can possibly gain from dissolving the district is giving up local control.
Right. We can't have that. I want.
So, so I just want to put that out there.
You want to make it clear to all the people that don't think they want it.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
They want it.
You can be the rock and you can be the hurt place.
That's more likely, what would, that's more how it would probably happen. There are all kinds of extraneous things, but that's most likely the.
No, no, I appreciate it, because we are in conversation with the state, too. There is financial games through grants, and I don't think they understand exactly the scenario that we've been in, but we're moving through. I mean, we just did the Concord Drive project. This is going to be the segue to our next, that's the next discussion. I don't mean to hold up everybody's evening, but we just did the Concord Drive project, and that's coming to a close. Now, it's a significant improvement on the system all as a whole, as a whole, so.
Before you move off the show quickly, just pivoting from the chicken question for a moment, just about enforcement in general. So there are situations in the district today where people have just dead cars that are an eyesore. So now, my understanding, and I don't want to wormhole into this, but my understanding is if an unregistered car is sitting on a property in Webster, you can provide some enforcement to have it removed or what have you. And if that is the case, I just want to ask, from a blanket perspective, are we in a position, go ahead and contact the police department, say, here are cars that are unregistered. Can we please have them removed? I mean, is the current blanket of enforcement available to us?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I would caution you that junky yards are, and I've said this a bunch in various places, and you'll hear this in planning board, too, junky yards are not junkyards. They are different. And just because a car is not registered doesn't mean it can't be there. I believe somewhere on the books, there's limitations for numbers of unregistered cars, and that may be different in residential versus other places. And whether they're visible or out of sight to be worked on as a hobby, it's like, so there's things there. But all of the normal.
Didn't want to go down so much the rabbit hole of details so much.
Applicable stuff to Webster, you can also access all of that just by calling.
So the enforcement capability is there?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Problem you run into is they can have unregistered cars on their property, or the car can be completely destroyed, and they can go get it registered, put plates on it, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Sure, right. So the specifics, I get it, are intricate, but.
But yes, all of the enforcement that is available is also available to you.
All right, cool.
Seguing into the next conversation on paving. So with the Concord Drive project being closed, I just wanted, I guess, say publicly, or just make sure we open the lines of communication. There had been some discussions in the past prior to wartime on the board about holding off on paving certain roads, Franklin Pierce, New Hampshire Drive specifically, and then Centennial is on our list, too. Holding off on paving those until we put a major renovation project in or an upgrade project into those areas. That way, we're not ripping up and putting down new paint right after you guys are done. It doesn't look like that's forecasted in the near future, so we just wanted, I guess, to open that line up to say that if, if there is a chance to put, I know, I'm sure every mile is wanted on, on your sheet for paving roads, but at the same time, if there is, there is availability to pave roads, those are the three primary roads that we want to do, at least open discussions about paving PLBD. Is this the way to do that, I guess? We, we can break it up in the, I guess, the finance discussions and all that, too, but.
It's actually a good time for that. We haven't yet gotten back the study that's supposed to tell us what all the different road surfaces are like. I believe that's coming soon, and the CIP committee will be talking about that once they have the answer, along with our road agent, to try and figure out how much is appropriate and kind of what orders things should be looked at. The, your previous comment about the way that things had been held off on, for example, Deer Meadow was one of those, where it had been held off on for quite some time in order to allow for the rest of that pipe to go in, that didn't happen.
Exactly.
So I would suggest that one of the things would be to look at, if you are going towards grants, and let's say you get them all, what would your timeline for replacement and order of replacement be? Because we can use that to make sure that if we do one and then you get the grants, we're not stepping on top of something that, well, we didn't think we were going to do this, but now we are.
The next focus.
Because we really don't want to waste either the town's or your money.
Well, right, right, no, no, and the next, the next focus, we're, we're going after, I believe it's $200,000, but it's all well source, water sourcing. It's not repiping unless we're going from wherever the source is to our system. So there's no additional repiping other than water shut-off. So that's going to be localized to wherever the water shut-off valve is. And whether we do it this month or honestly in five years, we're going to have to replace the, whatever part of the concrete that we get in, or asphalt that we get into the road. But I guess that, that's what we had talked about in our meeting, is that these three roads specifically, Franklin Pierce, New Hampshire Drive, and Centennial Drive, we, we don't have any plans for the foreseeable future, next five years, they're extended. We don't have any plans to upgrade those roads, because there are a few, only so many water customers on it. And if the system goes, we can cap it in some areas and only supply it in some areas, and we'll just banangle it that way for an extended period of time, because it's not worth, it's going to be upwards of a million dollars to replace a section of road that only serves so many people. So we'll have to figure that out as we kind of get through it. Right now, it's working great, so we have no foreseeable plans, I guess, is what I like to say openly. And then to add on the list, too, with Rumford Drive and then General Star, just because they mentioned it in their meeting, but I say that I mentioned it to you guys, so I know you guys will prioritize, but I want to mention those five roads.
I would only add, thank you, Andrew, I would only add to what Andrew shared, that the bulk of our spending over the past couple of years has, in fact, been to leak detection and repair. And the extent to which we're losing pressure due to leaks at this point is incredibly reduced, and we're all very happy about that. So that leaves us feeling that we've settled and that we're in a pretty stable situation, which would not push us towards doing any major renovations in the streets.
To the point, we did 14 caps in the last eight months, nine months since winter last year. So 14 caps in the last nine months, going from about 14 gallons a minute that we didn't know where it went to about a gallon and a half a minute that we don't know where it goes.
Oh, that's awesome.
Significantly reduced. The water just goes back into the water. And then that's going to help us, again, once we get this new well source, we'll potentially turn off the peninsula and we're not even pumping water from the ground under the, under the lake anymore. We'll be in a lot better shape there, too, because we actually treat that water that we're coming from the bottom of the lake. So, yeah, financially, this thing will start generating money, and then we can start, hopefully, doing these projects on our own with our own money and then not going after so many grant paybacks, so. But yeah, so I just wanted to open up the dialogue and at least say that, that we're not the stick in the mud, saying, hey, don't pave our roads yet, because we'd like those roads paved as soon as you guys are able to. And that's all I had. If you had any more questions, I don't mean to take up your whole meeting. I apologize for this amount.
I think it's very nice that you folks came and brought, you can't know everything in town, and, you know, if you bring them, and we'll work on them.
Yeah, I appreciate that, absolutely.
Just as a recap, was there any suggestion then from the board as to, is there someone else we should be speaking with? Or having spoken with you about the request to prioritize these particular roads, is that adequate? Or, what are you advising?
So my suggestion would be that you write down this, this list and say, these are the ones that we don't have plans to do anything to, so we would like them put into the normal schedule. And I would suggest sending that to Russ, our assistant town administrator, and he can make sure that our road agent and the CIP committee both see that when they're discussing roads.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So I, can I speak for a second?
Certainly.
Prioritize it.
You guys spent a lot of money this summer putting shut-off valves and blow-off valves and stuff, kind of too close to the road. Nobody notified anybody when that was done?
Did they move the location?
Yep, and so I did get ahold of your man from, is it Aquaman?
No, Aquaman, yeah, yeah.
Aquaman.
Craig.
And asked him if at least they could be marked with something, because you get a snowbank that they're about this high, and you get some snow, and then when you come along with a grader wing, they're going to be broke right off. And a lot of them shut off. It's just like the one headed up Rumford Drive on the lower side, that one right in the bank where you plow the snowing with the loader. I mean, I know it's there, but if you send somebody else, I mean, one time I had them all marked with delineators 15 years ago, but.
They should be marked.
They should be marked. It would save somebody a lot of.
When'd you tell Craig? Or, did, did, last week or so?
Two weeks ago, when I was grading out there on Rumford Drive, I happened to see it again, because they, you guys had a barn shut off there for a couple of winters, and then they put that blow-off there. Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's close.
See, I was under the impression they were putting in the same spot.
No.
But I was under the impression they were putting in the same spot.
No, and then I saw, was it up on New London Drive? They just put a new one in.
We've done a lot, like I said, yeah, we've done a ton of this.
Yeah, well, they, they need to be marked real well in, in six feet high markers. I mean, we haven't had a lot of snow, but if we get one of them winters, just to say, just, just to prevent something from happening.
No, you got it.
I can certainly respond at the same time.
We know unless you're here, you know.
Is there, am it anything written that says they have to be installed X feet off the right-of-way, or is there anything?
Well, just a little communication back a couple of years ago, they'd get ahold of you, and you'd go down when they were doing something. The last couple of years that you just come along and it's.
Well, they get just as upset about notifying us they're turning the water off. Well, they get just as upset about notifying us they're turning the water off too. It's like they send the guy over two o'clock in the afternoon to do work, and they don't tell us about it, but it's getting to be a big company, it's the same guys doing it, so we've gotten that excuse.
I just don't want to do any damage to anything, and if you can't see it, that's all.
And then we have a leak.
Right, after a big mess.
And I don't want to call somebody at midnight, tell them there's water coming up out of the ground, that's all. It's not a big deal, but if we could just mark them. I told the guy, take a six foot piece of rebar and two hose clamps and just put it on it, and put an orange flag on it, and.
No, I'll send a strong, not a strong word, a nicely worded email that just says if it gets banged up after Emmett told you not to, like, well, to mark it so it doesn't get banged up, and you're paying to replace it, so, and they'll go out there and mark it.
For the most part, it will be okay, but it's just, when the winter gets long and you get tired, and sometimes you.
We're on that too, we gotta get our plow guy, we got new, oh, I shouldn't put this on record, we got new numbers, but we're gonna put that out to bid too for plowing, but. We'll talk about it, sorry, I said.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Good job.
Alright, so that moves us on to our next appointment, which is Olive Wood Energy and the Extension Agreement Agreement. I will state that Michael was, Michael Kaplan of Olive Wood Energy was willing to be here, and that is for the Deer Meadows Solar Project, and specifically talking about the extension of the lease agreement for the joint owned Hopkinton-Webster transfer station land. I didn't think you really needed to be here for just an extension of an agreement, because none of the other topics were ready to be discussed. So you've seen the expectation from them in the packet, and you find the email, so I can read a quick bit from it for everybody. So, the context is of course that this is for the seven megawatt portion of the seventy-five megawatt project that has been proposed. If anyone has further questions about what that is, you can go to our website, we've got the Solar Subcommittee, which hasn't been meeting for quite a while, because they haven't had further information for us. But the generalities and any details that we do have are there and available for everybody, including some pamphlets on what the project entails and where. So they had originally expected that they would be constructing by now, and actually, quite frankly, close to operation or in operation. Several things, most particularly interconnection agreements delayed that full process. And they are still wanting to move forward, thanks to the interconnection agreement that they had most likely being finally worked out with approval of the Twin States project, because they are tying into the same line. They want to continue forward with Deer Meadows Solar Project. And now that they have details to be able to do it, they want to pay us to continue to be able to do that, and then to continue the process as was originally supposed to happen. However, the original agreement was to end, actually, is it this month?
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth.
Well, they did a one-year extension that made it November nineteenth.
So they used the option that was there of a one-year extension that will end November nineteenth this month. There was only representation for one extension in the original agreement. They are requesting that we do two additional extension options at progressively higher cost to them for being able to exercise those extensions. I believe the original extension was either one thousand or two thousand total, and they're suggesting that the first one, which would be to continue this November, would be ten thousand, and if they need to continue again, it would be twenty thousand, paid to the towns through the standard transfer station split. So it would be revenue towards the transfer station split, twenty-five seventy-five. That is the primary thing that they are requesting to be changed, that is in that agreement. There, apparently the transfer station has multiple little parcels that they had talked about, and one of them is not needed, so they've removed it from their portion of the agreement for that. And finally, in order to sweeten the deal further beyond the ten and twenty, the escalation of rent, so much like the pilot was expected to continue going up in percentages. The rent was expected to go up, or I should say the lease agreement would have been expected to go up every six years. Except, for whatever reason, whoever did it and signed it in the first place, it was actually year six, eleven, and twenty-one. So there was a missing section in there around year sixteen, and so they are proposing that they add in an additional escalation at year sixteen, so that it's the standard every five-year period, so it would be year six, eleven, sixteen, and twenty-one.
Is it only twenty-one years long?
What was that?
Is it only, is it only at least for twenty-one years?
That's a good question. I believe, I believe the way it's written is that the lease agreement is for that length with an option, much like with the pilot, to continue up to forty years. And the entire project does have an option up to forty years.
Okay.
And so that are, those are the things that they are suggesting. They did have some, some numbers that were associated to help show it, but did you have any other questions before I open it up?
No.
With, and it may be inherent, with the whole decommissioning part, is that anything changed with that?
So the decommissioning would be part of the memorandum of understanding and the pilot, not part of the lease agreement.
Extension, okay.
Okay, yes.
Well, my understanding was that there was a forty-year lease and is incremented by a certain percentage, I forget what it was, every year. I don't understand what this every six years.
Ah, sure. So there's two pieces, actually three pieces. Okay, four. So there's four pieces, and it's easy to kind of co-mingle them, because they're all increasing payments over time. The first two pieces are, and I say two, because one is town and one is private citizens, is the either lease agreements and or purchase agreements. I believe some of the residents have purchase agreements instead of lease agreements. But the towns, joint as Webster and Hopkinton, have a, have an existing lease agreement for the amount of land to be used at the transfer station. That is the specific piece we're talking about right now. And additionally, individual members of the community may have their own lease agreements and or purchase agreements, that in theory, they're having the same discussions. The second piece of that, on top of it, so we've got the two pieces already, the other half of that are the two pieces of pilot agreements. And the pilot agreements, it stands for payment in lieu of taxes, are the every-year escalators that you're probably referring to and have heard about talking fairly significantly in the past. The joint land has a pilot agreement signed by Hopkinton, because it is their land, even though we own it, and that revenue goes into the transfer station and then gets the standard twenty-five seventy-five split. The town of Webster also has another pilot that does the same thing, but covers all of the land that is to be used within Webster. And that's including the private lands, so that the solar company would be paying that tax per se instead of each individual landowner. And so you don't deal with utility appraisal and depreciation, you have a continually increasing value of tax type payment. So those are how it breaks out, and what I think you're talking about is the pilot for the every-year escalator. Both of the pilots do escalate every year, and the lease agreements are set to upgrade themselves every five years.
Ryan, you mentioned that I was not interested in this section of the transfer station.
So out of the, I haven't looked at the map to see exactly which section it is, but basically, the original project included things like the cap and use of the, what was on top of the previous dump. And that is not being used now, and so things such as that, and I believe there's another small piece that may have been wet or something of that nature, but they're not planning to put solar stuff on that. So they're just saying, let's just take it out of the agreement, we don't need to worry about it.
So is Hopkinton still involved in this?
Yes, so the transfer station is still there. Anything that we do with regarding this is going to also need to be approved by Hopkinton. Even with the removal of that piece of the transfer station plot, they are not saying that they would reduce payments for less size of area that they're leasing. It's for the project, so. Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Dave, I just want to clear in my mind, this is regarding the, the transfer station property. Am I correct on that?
Correct, this is to extend the lease options for the transfer station property.
Okay, and the figures that they stayed in here, we're entitled to twenty-five percent of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so for example, the ten thousand payment that they're suggesting we would get approximately two thousand five hundred, Hopkinton would get approximately seven thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry, the rep from Olive Wood's not here, I was, I hope that he would be. What do you estimate the chances of this actually going through? Or, and speaking another way, what is the chance of it not going through?
I can't hear him.
So he asked, what are the chances of this happening, actually going through? Having spoken to solar company a couple times, basically asking them the same thing, they would not be looking to extend these leases to be able to continue the project if they didn't think they were going to do the project. They've been wanting to do the project, have been wanting to do the projects, and have been trying to do the project, but have been mainly held up because the interconnection agreement was not given to them, because companies wanted to wait and see what happened with the Twin States line, because the line that is being upgraded for Twin States is what they are interconnecting to. So they, they look forward to it and expect that, assuming both Webster and Hopkinton agree to be paid more to continue the lease agreement, that with, in the coming new year, fairly early on, that they would get us the more civil design aspects of it, which they really hoped to have provided us, actually about two years ago now. But the interconnection stuff took forever, so.
So I read in the paper that the federal government's giving a lot of money to interstate connection, and it's not gonna be applied to that corridor out here. So would that up the chances of that actually happening, do you think? I mean, I know this is sort of hypothetical, but.
I don't know the exact specifics, but it does, the line upgrade that's happening raises the voltage on the line, which raises the cost for them to interconnect. They're still bullish on being able to do it and wanting to do it.
Okay.
Beyond that, I can't really provide more.
I understand, I was hoping.
They probably wouldn't provide more than that either.
Probably, right.
But, yeah, so.
It's nice to see a happy face, right?
Yes, and so they look forward to being able to come and visit and have more meetings once they have more to give us. But this is, this is just about, they want to pay us more money to hang on to being able to lease the land.
Okay, I got it.
So. And in theory, Hopkinton is also looking at this this evening, at their meeting. So, any further questions?
Oh, you're feeling well.
I try.
I know.
Is this something we should, I believe the motion should be that we would accept the agreement contingent upon Hopkinton also accepting it.
If that is your, how you want to go, if you wish to accept the agreement, I would, I would word it that way.
Are there any other concerns or questions that you think we should look at first?
I don't, I don't think so. It's basically the same, I haven't sent this since I just got it over to the attorney to have him look at it, but I didn't see much different from the last agreement. So I don't have to, it looked rather straightforward to me. And I guess I'm understanding that once the agreement is executed, the town receives twenty-five hundred dollars within ten days, and then next year, on before November nineteenth, the town would receive five thousand dollars.
Yes, because it would be ten thousand and twenty thousand total, which we, twenty-five percent. Is that what the board would wish to do?
Sounds good to me.
Alright, I would move that we accept the, accept the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Extension?
Amendment.
Amendment?
Accept the amendment to the land lease agreement as presented, contingent upon acceptance by Hopkinton as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to sign this agreement?
I think we should probably wait until.
You want to wait till Hopkinton lets me know?
Yeah. Alright. Moving right along, that moves us to Department Head Reports. Come on down, gentlemen. And I will just say that we do have budget presentations after this, so you can go through the normal stuff first.
So, the police budget. As of October twenty-sixth, we have spent two hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents out of our twenty-three budget of three hundred and six thousand two fifty-one. Lease is twenty-seven point five two percent, so we're in really good shape. Only a few months left, and we've not even spent three quarters of our budget. From October first to the thirty-first, fairly quiet, twenty-one motor vehicle stops, one summons, ninety-six bucks twenty cents paid to the state of New Hampshire. We don't get anything out of that, but we had sixty-two calls for service, civil matter requests, we had quite a few of those, had a lot of civil problems between different locations within town. Department information tips received, domestic violence services, mental health services, we had a few of those. Motor vehicle complaints, pistol permits, residential burglary alarms, road hazards, suspicious activity reported, sex offender registration, subpoenas served, suspicious vehicles reported, vacant house checks, which is basically, if somebody goes on vacation and they want us to check their house while they're gone, we're more than happy to provide that and do it till they come home. Assist other agencies, animal complaints, had a few of those, missing person reported, two missing persons reported, all found safe. Citizens assist. Uh, citizens assist, uh, assist the fire department and the EMS, and just a few nondescript complaints that were really not police related, but we still took care of them. Um, we had in-service training at the police stands and train to keep up with our amount of hours we'd have to do for every officer. Conducted background checks for two replacement hires for, for our last Jordan's position. Um, before they were finished, both went to other departments for a considerable amount more money than we could have offered. Um, so that puts a hurt on us. Um, basically that's about it. It was a fairly straightforward month. Hopefully I'll say it that way.
Um, how many part-timers do we have at this point?
Right now, we have three. We have one that works at least three days a week. And one that's working one, the other one is, is right now working for Merrimack County Sheriff's Department because they're shorthanded. So he's only worked one day in the last three months. So I got two that work pretty regularly. Um, so it's, and I'm looking for more, but places like Franklin offer thirty-five dollars an hour for a part-timer with a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus.
Wow.
For a part-time position. That's, how can, we can't compete to that. We can't even come close. So I'm happy that we got what we got and that they're willing to work and they're well-trained, which is really good for us. But we keep searching. Somewhere later we'll find somebody.
And there's something to be said about, you know, the, the nice, easy, quiet.
Small towns. Absolutely.
So hopefully we find the right person that wants that.
I hope so. So that's where I stand.
Any further questions or comments?
No.
All right.
So on the firehouse part of it there, last month, um, I was gone away for a week and Ben and Jake were taking control and, um, they had a search and rescue, which went real well. Um, they had a, a UTV accident with serious injuries. Um, they did a great job. Ben, um, went to the school. He had a handful of people. Did you go with him off to the school? Was there four or five of you went?
Yeah.
For, um, fire prevention, um, there in an afternoon. Um, that week I was gone, they had called to schedule the pump training, so Ben and Jake took care of that. Um, engine two, which they had all been serviced. At Charlie Boys and engine two, in the beginning of the pump test, um, the fuel filter blew off. Um, so they went and got another fuel filter and that blew off, so Jake called me. And I told Jake, you can't, that filter they had on, it was, wasn't going to work. So I told him what he needed to do and they gave him what he needed at Charlie Boys and, um, so that's all back up and going. So that, um, the tanker in engine three passed the pump test, but they need to come back out and do finish engine two because they couldn't complete it with the, with the fuel filter problem. Um. So on the ATV accident, they had found that the backboard that clips together, um, was broke. They did make it work to get the patient out of the, um, place that he was in and into the ambulance. So, um, a new one of them, uh, it's called a scoop stretcher, is fifteen hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. So I'm going to work with Dana to get a PO together on that. And the four gas meter in engine three, the battery keeps going dead in that. And we called the people at IPS that sells them. And to buy a new battery, in the meter's almost five years old now, it's almost outdated. So it's, um, cheaper to buy a new, a new gas meter and than it is to buy the battery. And then on the in-bag, there's a, a CO detector and I have one on my radio. And they are a two-year meter and they're done. So between the two, the, the three meters, it's fifteen hundred and fourteen hundred and sixty-six dollars. So Dana and I will put a PO together for that. And, uh, car seat in the ambulance had expired. So that has to be all up and running for the light, for the ambulance to be, um, inspected through the state. The let was five hundred and something dollars and, um, they ordered one of them last Wednesday night, so that's on order. So that should be good for the firehouse unless anybody has any questions.
No.
I have a question. Emmett, is the, um, funds for this purchase orders, are they in your current budget?
Yeah.
You have sufficient in there?
Yeah, yeah, for, um, supplies. Yeah, no, I didn't, I grabbed that. It was on the table, but I.
Yeah, I, I looked like I did.
Yeah. There's plenty of money left in that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, we'll be purchasing them, so, um, because we need that for the ambulance, the back, the scoop stretcher for the, to make it all work. So we've been working on the dump road, which is Pleasant Street. I call it Dump Road. We finished that up today, so that should be good. Did you drive over it and check it out?
I drove, I drove over some of it, a few different times. You can definitely see a lot better.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of rocks. We brought them all back to the pit and pounded them up last week. So they're all ready to be crushed in the spring and. Um, graded up some roads, getting them ready for winter. Going to go up to Hollins Drive, fix the turnaround on that tomorrow. And a meeting with Rich Little from TDS tomorrow at ten-thirty to check the poles out that need to be moved on Pleasant Street and to go up to the Little Hill Project, see what we can do up there with the wires. So. And they've got the, um, Dustin Road project cut. I haven't been down to see if it's been cleaned up, but it'll be chipped and then we're going to go down and stump that and get that ready for, um, winter sand.
Somebody had a question.
Yep.
Um, are you going to straighten it, Pleasant Street? I mean, those curves right down there where you got it on?
On the dirt part?
Yeah.
Uh, we widened it out somewhat, but I didn't want to get too crazy there and the road's still going to wind around. And our goal was to get it a little wider, not a whole bit wider and, um, just to get the sight distance so the cars could see the.
Yeah.
Cars.
Right.
Because the trouble is, we can get it nice and wide from Dinget's Corner to where we go out into the town pit. But after that, without major work and a lot of tree work and then the stone walls are so close.
Right.
It, it's kind of defeating the purpose of having, having it wide on one end and not on the other.
Okay.
So that was our goal, was the sight distance.
Yeah. Well, you got that.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Well, looks like, uh.
Pleasant Street.
It's all gone well.
Pleasant Street. We got the shoulders all out on that and that's complete. Um, the job on Roby Road, shoulders are all out on that. That's complete. So another check off our list.
Just need an easy winter.
And we didn't get anything from that PMA, right?
No, no, we didn't even, we, I don't even think Merrimack County got.
We didn't meet the minimums.
Yeah, got on the list.
He wasn't eligible.
Um.
So fortunately, we were able to work with Emmett to get done what needed to be done, done. But, uh, it was definitely a large financial stretch to make happen and lots of creativity, so.
And it needed to be done, but it just wasn't in the plan to do it this year.
Right. So.
Can't do everything in one year, that's for sure.
No, we did get a lot done.
You did. No, you did.
It was fourteen hundred and, fourteen hundred and eighty feet of new tire on Roby Road.
Wow.
Um, and I'm pretty sure it's close to four thousand feet on Pleasant Street.
Looks good.
Yeah, Pleasant Street's nice up there now.
Yeah, and the drainage is, it should work. Hopefully.
All right. Oh, yes.
I have a question. It's not about anything that we've discussed yet, but I, I think we had talked, we talked to the chief about it. Um, we're, on Lake Road, it used to be many, many moons ago, they had twenty-five mile per hour signs. And we've, the, the chief knows the problem that we've had with some renters up the street are just driving like, like madmen with the big jacked up trucks and everything. So we were wondering if we could get some twenty-five mile per hour signs. And cleaning my garage, I have one, if you, I will donate it. I, it's probably been in it for thirty-five years. But, um, if we could get a twenty-five mile an hour sign, you know, put on each end. Because I know the chief had brought one of those electronic signs that said you're going too fast. But they are just, um, they're still, they're not only loud, but they are just, they fly.
Can you verify that these are twenty-five mile an hour?
It is.
You went to the town clerk?
Michelle said it was a twenty-five zone.
Well, she would know.
She would know.
Okay.
It always was in the past.
It was always a twenty-five zone, as far as I know.
So I'll, I'll get, I'll get you the sign.
No, I have, I have, I mean, if, if that's what you want, I have, I have a couple of signs over the sand shed.
I'm not going to use it. I'm, I'm cleaning now.
Okay.
I'll donate it to you.
Sure. Um, so yeah.
Thank you.
Is the board in agreement that if we've got the signs, we should just put them up?
We just have to get a couple of posts.
Yeah, we'll just make sure, make sure that it's actually twenty-five. Uh, I think we've done that already, but let's double check that and then as long as this, you know, there's spots for the signs that make sense, go for it.
So it is November and the winter ordinance goes into place November first. I did talk to Dana to put that on the web, or Russell, either, I forget, either one of you. Uh, or maybe both, to go on the website.
I think he has.
Parking, the parking in the street part.
I'm putting it in my paper, too.
You're right on the front page.
Yeah. Yeah, I've done that before.
No, you have. You're great. You do a great job. Um, so that has whatever, so, um, if there's any cars, which there is, and people won't be, yeah, they'll be getting a.
We have one major place. You know where that is.
Um.
Thankfully, they get one morning.
Well, they haven't gotten tickets. Many of them.
So I do have, yeah, my sander bodies and my trucks are ready to go. So.
How is our, um, sand and salt?
Oh.
I mean, I know you're going to the pit to get more sand, but.
Yeah, I have some salt, but I have enough until the first of the year, until the new budget comes. Um, not that we use a lot anyways, and then, um, we're in pretty good shape.
Good.
For what we have down there and what we already have over here.
We'll make it, is what we like to hear.
We are hoping there'll be no snow. I know. No.
If there's no snow, then you better, um, get me a gas card and I'll ride home and sleep. You must have a couch I can sleep on.
I do, yeah. Because I hate to take too much of Steve's excess money.
We're going to have fun, but I'm going to try and spend some tonight.
All right. Speaking of trying to spend some tonight, since we've had some good road and police conversations, it's budget presentation time next on the agenda.
Have a nice night. Sorry, the jet game's on. I'm going to get the jets up here.
Yeah, we got to watch the jets. Sorry.
Thank you again for the.
You're welcome. Anytime.
I'm a New Yorker.
This is being streamed and, uh, recorded, so feel free to check in between commercials.
The crumb cakes are on sale. I saw that. Get twelve in the shop. New York crumb.
All right, so who wants to go first?
Well, I can go first because I'm not ready. I haven't got, I've been right out crazy with lack of help and a lot happening. I have been working with Bruce Davis from Allstate Asphalt on getting some, um, chip seal prices for next year on the roads that are ready. And when Warren from GMI, he said a couple of more weeks because they're really trying to get stuff buttoned up before it gets real cold. And then he's going to come out and we're going to measure up some roads that need to be done. We won't have money to do it all, but we'll have some numbers to work with Russell, with the CIP.
Perfect.
Um, so him working, working on that, so, um, but Dana has got after me and I put him off a couple of times, but, um, I will make it happen.
Well, and I know we're still also waiting for the bit of survey, so.
Correct. So, um, I'm, I'm bad on that one.
Well, it, it helps to have the, the survey to use as backing and data for that, so.
On that part, correct. But I do know that, um. Yeah. Things, things aren't ten dollars anymore.
No.
When you price out, when you put this together, will you try to get more than one price from even paving or even material?
No.
Yeah. No, how come that is?
Because I, I grow a relationship with one person or one company and I get my money's worth. I walk beside the paver. And. All, all the other towns around use the same person. And it's the quality of work. I'd rather pay five dollars more a ton for something and get a good job than, than try to snowball it.
Well, I mean, I can understand if there's, they just, they may just be the cheapest game in town, too.
Yeah, well, they, they.
I mean, quality, I think there's, you know, there's, you know, there's lots of quality paving people out there, so. I mean, even, even, you know, there's a job just in Hennecker that was, you know, they, they probably just, hey, they have the same health problems as the rest, so. I'm not, I'm not stating that you're wrong, that their quality's not good.
You asked me and I just, yeah.
Right, but I, I guess I would just, I was just saying that, I just didn't know how you, when you put this together, if there's, if you got three prices or not on things.
No, I talked to the select board back how many years ago and told them that I worked with these folks. I think you were maybe here and.
I think I was here, but I don't know if I was on the board yet.
Maybe not, but.
I was just, I was just curious.
And we started out, we started out this spring and by the time I got done and you add up all the tonnage that, that we used, it was five dollars more a ton at the end of the year that I paid than what he quoted me in the spring. And, um.
And with the price of everything, that's not bad.
No, it didn't go up. It went down.
Oh, it went down?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's perfect.
But it was the, the more tonnage you buy.
Right.
The better you're, you're going to get. Because we threw the Roby Road in and then we did a, I did, we were going to do twenty-five hundred feet on Pleasant Street. And I added some of that, a little bit more, and we did the little bridge project over there. And I'm not saying you can't get it cheaper.
That was just a question.
Yeah. But that's, um, they do, we buy, which we did crush for a thousand yards of our own material. But we buy a lot of gravel from them in the summer and...
And they're in a good location.
They're in a good location and, um, he gives us a good price.
That's important. You've got a good working relationship.
So... Yeah. You could go elsewhere with your paving, but is your gravel gonna go up five bucks a ton? I mean, I mean, it's, it's, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not, it just all works together.
Yeah, I understand that. That's good.
Because you don't wanna have to drive twice the distance, cause it costs you more, even if it's cheaper.
It'll be two hundred dollars a load to truck in instead of a hundred. And it's even cheaper going right here in town.
Which thankfully we get to do, both with gravel and sand, at least on occasion.
Right now.
Yeah. And that stuff that we crushed up this summer, that's got tire, I mean, we, I laid that out on the dump road today and that, that's some fine, that's some nice stuff. That tire in it and the right rock and, yeah, that, some nice material.
Good.
And then with the rocks that we pounded off in Pleasant Street, we have a good start on the next pile for the next time we crush.
There are a lot of rocks there. I didn't realize that. There's a lot of rocks on Pleasant Street you took out. Yes.
Probably about fifteen hundred yards after it's all banged up.
Wow.
So, since we don't have further details yet, and, um, I will simply say that my personal hope, and I have no idea if the rest of the board is on with this or not. My personal hope is that we can, uh, continue to do what we started last time in simplifying things. And we've been basically using the funds as a normal budget line item. The funds provide, when used correctly, what they should, which was the extra amount that was sitting there to be able to handle the emergency. Don't wanna get rid of anything like that, but especially for the normal preventive maintenance. I think we can move some of that into the budget side and kinda split the difference. So some of it goes fund, some of it goes budget.
Dana and I, we were talking about that, correct?
Yeah. But that's kind of my hope, so that things make more sense to the general public at the end of the year.
Yeah, at the end of the day, because, yeah.
I never want to get where we don't use it and we kinda lost it, cause I want the funds to keep growing. But I don't want us to be using the funds like a budget, so they're constantly dropping all the time to almost nothing. So we can stay fiscally responsive and also transparent that way. Anyway, uh, anything for fire? Or is that not on today's?
Um, I had put it on, but Emma and I haven't had a chance to do that either, so.
That shouldn't change a whole...
Okay.
Whole bunch or whatever, but we'll, we'll go over that.
Why don't, why don't we talk about it?
Yeah.
Just so I know, mainly for me, so that I make sure I understand where we are with that.
I just know on the, on the highway side, I mean, it's whatever, so I mean, the last spreader chain I bought was eight hundred dollars. Russell called last Thursday to order a new one. It's twenty-three hundred dollars.
And that's where we are. I think the town appreciates you trying to be very conservative, but it's just not possible.
Yeah, it's just the, the price of, it's, it's crazy. So, but that's another day.
Yes.
And most likely another dollar.
Or two.
Yeah, I agree.
I apologize. I'm gonna step over so that I can hopefully stop almost sleazing and I will be right back, but feel free to continue.
Steve, I did not ask you about the public safety building budget. There's a few items in the government buildings that we will need to fill in.
Yep. Okay, cause I don't even have that with me.
No, and I don't expect you to. I'm just saying that I just...
I'll tell you what, I will come, I'll find out from him when he's gonna meet with you for his, and I'll come and add that in.
Okay.
We can do that.
There's only, I mean, it's the things like that you would know, the maintenance, the summer maintenance, the propane, things like that.
Yeah, propane is what's...
Well, the summer maintenance, who's mowed the place the last two years and doesn't charge anything anyways?
We've had the two hundred dollar su- summer budget straight through.
She mows it and weed whacks it every time she does a cemetery.
Well, I think, I think that the price is right then.
Yeah. Price is pretty good.
Yeah. And the other one that I think Rob is involved with is rescue expenses, Emma.
What's that, dear?
Rescue expenses.
Is that for the ambulance?
Oh, it says rescue expenses, other public safety. It's a hundred dollars. It's never been spent. It's up and...
I have to...
Rob, do you have any...
Cause I know we had some small dollar odds for like subscriptions and that kinda thing, and I don't know if that just came out of something different, but...
That's usually office supplies, but...
Well, I didn't know if this was something like if you had like a rescue to do or something like that.
It's a whole different line item, right?
It is. It's all by itself.
Ah, you've had it hidden away. I haven't been, yeah.
I haven't wanted to see it. I crossed it off. No, it's been, it's in the budget, but it's only a hundred dollars. It's never been spent, but that might be something we can talk about as well.
Okay, yeah.
Is that perhaps a placeholder, like the forest fire type line?
It could be, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
You good?
I'm good. I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Not, not to get you to leave. See you later.
Yeah.
Come on, you gotta come and work early.
Said he spent the whole day, two days looking for me, couldn't find me.
He was hiking, good.
Thank you.
So, the police budget. I should've sent this to you the last week. I don't know when I did it. I thought I did and I didn't. Um, but you'll notice that the only real increase is in wages, except for police contract services. So that, if you look at the contract services, it's, um, the server upgrade for twenty twenty-four. It's eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. It's a one-time fee. This was set for last year for the server at the police station.
What was that?
The server that was due to be upgraded last year and we didn't, so it's upgraded for this year.
We upgraded the server.
I thought it was upgraded.
I know. I had it, we just had it set in our line item for the server upgrade, the twenty-four, and we got that from the, uh...
Cause we did, we did the police server upgrade at the same time as we swapped to the new IT company.
We got the IT company to tell us that the server upgrade that needed to be done, it was eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
I wonder if they're conflating that server with the temple server?
I wonder. I'll call...
Because, because we did have them do it. We bought all the IPs and everything.
I mean, obviously, you need server up.
From them that it was supposed to be a server upgrade, cause I was gonna say, let's take that out of my twenty-three budget and that'll drop my budget down three percent.
Okay.
What did it do?
I, uh...
Under where it says contract services?
Yep.
The forty-six percent increase, one, that's got an increase of eight thousand four hundred and seventy.
Yep, okay.
So I'm looking at this letter from Dave Croft. This is something different then from what you're, you're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll leave that for further information. The other major ones are, of course, as you mentioned, wages and...
I take that back. Nope, you're a hundred percent right. That was for the server upgrade for Merrimack County, so we have to pay our portion of it. That's what that's for.
Ah, yeah, that's kind of where I was.
That's, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
So what was that, the contract services?
Contract services. That's through Merrimack County.
That's for dispatch, right.
If you look at the last page on that letter from the Merrimack County sheriff, our total's gonna be twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for twenty twenty-four. And that's to pay our portion of the server that runs IMC, runs everything for the dispatch center. And you can see how much, everybody else is paying the exact same amount, eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen bucks.
So perhaps it's in the, uh, letter here that I haven't read yet, cause we just got it.
So that's a one-time fee.
What is the multi-agency part that most, but not all of the towns have?
Um, some agencies aren't involved in it. So they're not in the multi-agency, so they don't supply the same information that we do and they don't get the dispatch fees like we do. But you can see what they use across that. I mean, some of the use across a forty-two thousand, how was it? Twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-one. Uh, we're the next to the lowest, one is the lowest out of all of them, but that's, they also don't use their multi-agency fees.
Okay, so that makes unfortunate sense.
So I, I would like to take that out of my twenty-three budget, cause that'll knock in forty-six percent.
Is that basically a PO that they've already provided you?
Yep.
Do we have any, uh, impact fees that would be usable for public safety that could be used towards that?
Well, the impact fees that we have, it's public safety building.
Oh, it's building, though.
Building, yeah. Um, so I would say no.
But I'm gonna have enough left over my budget to pay that bill. I mean, that's a big chunk, eight thousand, that's nine thousand dollars.
Is the user fee and the other, is that increased from previous year?
Um, the user fee has gone up a little bit, not much.
Yeah.
And it usually goes up, so the user fee is call volume generated, so every call that we get generates a fee. And it depends, and you look and you can see the towns percentage-wise for the number of calls. I mean, we use two point nine two percent of all the calls, so we're really pretty low on it.
So the eighty-nine fifteen is they are just, um, assessing each community that they service.
Each community that they dispatch for the same fee.
For that amount.
To pay for.
So that has nothing to do with the percentage. That's just a, a straight...
Straightforward fee.
You know, I mean, if I could just say to the board, I don't mean to be a naysayer, and there's a possibility we could do that, but I think we'd have to wait to the end of the year until we knew.
You mean for him to take it out of his budget?
Well, and, and I don't, I kid Steve, but I'm, I am worried about the bottom line of the budget. And if I, if I, I don't wanna have to go to the DRA and, and try to get forgiveness on spending over the budget.
Well, I understand what you mean, so you may need that nine grand.
Maybe I won't. I'm just, you know, I always...
I just figured it would make my portion for my next year's increases, it would drop to three percent. Cause right now, I'm, with what I got proposed, I'm looking for a nine percent increase, which, uh, for our concern is, is high. And that would drop it down to six percent.
So in the, the letter here that they sent, they said, please understand this is not your bill, but it is the final numbers. We'll send you your bill as always sometime next spring. I thought in order to do, in, in order to spend it this year, we had to have an actual bill slash PO.
The thing you could do if, if we get to the end of the year and we have flexibility to do that, and we probably will, I'm just careful. You could do a purchase order and encumber the funds.
How would we do the purchase order if they're supposed to send us the bill in the spring?
You can do either a purchase order or a bill.
They will send us a bill anytime.
But, yeah, but I could, we could get a bill.
There's a few other departments that are paying it out of this year's budget, because everybody's had wages that they've, like, haven't spent. So they'd rather take it out of twenty-three's budget instead of billing it into twenty-four.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay, so Dana can work with you to see if slash when that would be possible?
Yep, and I, I could probably come pretty close to giving them an idea of what I might have for a figure for the end of the year, so that'll help you.
Yeah.
Well, we are, I'm not, you know. We have we have three thou- uh, three hundred eleven thousand dollars left in this year's budget.
How much?
Three hundred eleven thousand.
Oh.
Which is the closest that I've ever been since I've been here. And I'm not saying that this, I mean, just think something, you know. And probably toward the end of the year, we'd have enough funds, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm guarding.
So I got twenty-eight thousand left in mind and I know I'll have enough to pay for that, and that's nine grand.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm expecting that my budget's gonna not chew up a lot between now and the end of the year.
Oh, I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, yours, but your budget's not the one I'm concerned.
Yeah. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Kinda like to give the classroom.
And it's no one's fault either. It's no one's fault. I mean, you know, we had this major road thing that happened. It was a storm. We did not get any relief from the federal government, because we didn't have enough damage. Um, go figure.
Name the federal government.
Is it possible to encumber part of the bill or PO?
Yes.
Okay. So we should be able to do something of that, even if it's not the full amount, in theory.
I'm just trying to make it way that numbers look better. If we can't and we need to offset it, I'd rather not go to DRA also.
And normally that's the, normally that's the last meeting of the year that results in encumbrances, so put it on the list and if it can, great. If it can't, well, then it can't.
So, dear, yep, I understand that.
But that ma- that makes perfect sense to try and do that, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, definitely.
Yeah.
Well, while you were bringing this up for the dispatch and the numbers of calls and stuff, obviously this is the nine-one-one dispatch?
Yep.
Is there also a local number?
This is also, just calls generated to the police department, um, that the sheriff's department answers. So if we're not in the station, they answer the phone and generate a call for us. Um, that's what most of these calls are for.
So this is police dispatch, not overall dispatch?
Right, just, just police dispatch, nothing else.
Okay.
Fees. So the biggest thing is the police vacancy that I have. So we were paying Jordan twenty-six ninety-eight an hour. I put in sixty, up to sixty-five thousand dollars for a new officer, which would raise it to thirty-one twenty-five. Not that we would pay the officer that much. It's gonna depend, but if I don't have a sixty-five thousand dollar bill to pay for an officer, I ain't gonna find anybody. Even at sixty-five, that's low. Most departments around here are starting at sixty-five or better.
Wow.
For an unsertified man, and I'm looking for a guy that can come here with a uniform on and go to work. I don't have to send him to a year's training. And I, they're out there. You just, you gotta pick and choose, cause usually the ones that are jumping ship, they're jumping ship from department to department to department, all within a year or less. Just looking for another dollar an hour. Well, I'm not looking for somebody like that, cause that's, that's a lose for us. We have to pay for our vast uniforms.
Yeah, right.
And then he's gone in less than a year or a year. No, that's a lose for me. I don't, I'm not looking for that. If I don't turn out to useless candidate for us. So I, I've had a few people apply like that, but I know all they're doing is they're jumping. I mean, a couple of them, four or five departments in the last five years, so it's...
Wow.
No, uh, thanks, but no thanks. We don't, we don't need that.
Let's hope that someday with, this is, of course, it's not just your department. It's everywhere.
It's everywhere, and that's the scary part.
It is scary, because, because... And it is, it is scary because, because one day we're gonna be back in the driver's seat, my friend. You know, when you got this guy that's jumped eight times, you're like, hmm.
Yeah, it's not good.
Yeah. Yeah. But, yeah, it's everywhere.
But I got, I maintain that Webster's a very nice place to work.
And that's what I tell everybody.
That's right. You're being recorded, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It is a very nice place to work.
Well, I was thinking when you were saying how Franklin is this, and we're this, and the difference between Webster and Franklin is a pretty big difference. I'm assuming, I'm not judging.
It is, but you have to look at, um, people coming into the business. So you're getting young people. They want action. They want something to do. They're not gonna get that here.
No.
They're gonna get that in Franklin, or Cronkite, or, you know, any of the big towns or cities. They're gonna get that action. But they pay for it. But they're worse shaped than we have. They can't keep it up at all. Everybody's jumping ship.
I didn't mean to indicate you weren't doing anything. That wasn't what I was.
No, yeah, it's not that we're not doing anything. We have a steady roll of calls.
Yeah, I know, I know you were.
That's what I was indicating.
I guess I can spend more time up on your
Yeah, right.
I see the red truck.
I want a bit more action, right?
So that's what I'm looking at. Um, I'm basing it on a sixty-five thousand dollar top end for a price tag, and, uh, that's starting to pay for a lot of places, but we have a little more to offer, so I think it may help.
What's their average hours of that, are you thinking?
Average hours per week?
Yeah, of our sixty-five thousand, okay.
It's a forty-hour week. At least a forty-hour week. Uh, cause it's basically a full-time job. That's a full-time patrolman.
And then there's additional for overtime.
Right.
And we, this is the first year since I've been here, six years, that we've spent our overtime. We've never gone through it. And that's only because we haven't had no help.
Which I know that you have limitations for the number of hours you can work. How, how is that working?
For me, it's no problem at all, cause I'm legally, I can work thirty-two hours a week because I was under a signed contract before they changed the law to twenty-four hours.
Okay.
And as long as my contract stays valid for the town, when I leave here, it goes away. It goes to twenty-four. But I can still legally work thirty-two. And vacation time and holidays don't count towards your hours. So, yeah, I couldn't, I'd have to work a lot of hours to make up that time.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
He just loves it here. That's why we love him too.
We, we tried to make him wanna stay.
That's right.
Well, twenty twenty-four will be fifty years I've done this job.
Wow. And since you got here, it's so much fun. I'd probably make another twenty.
Yeah, okay. I won't be, I won't be alive in twenty years, but I don't believe it.
That's great.
As much as I like it.
One to four.
Yeah, well, there's no doubt about that.
Time goes by fast though. I can't believe I'm on my thirty-ninth year of my Webster paper. It's like, my God, man.
People, people don't realize, younger, younger people don't realize how quick it goes by. We all do. You don't yet. You're still a kid.
My son just got married.
Well, I was gonna say, doesn't that
I realize how quick things happen.
That's right. That's a reality check, cause then you still have ones that are fairly little, yeah.
As my daughter says to me, what do you expect at your age? That's how she tells me.
Well, we're still smiling with all those kids. That's what I did. I loved having my kids around. And I even had extra ones to babysit.
Yes.
Well, chief, we try to make it interesting for you.
At times. I gotta agree, at times.
And, and you know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yes. And it's not a bad thing. Keeps everybody on their toes.
It does.
But, and unless you get questions, I say look this over, and then we'll talk, and we'll see what else we can do. I mean, anything we can do to make it work, we're gonna work.
The reminder, just to make sure that everything stays easy, um, the expectation would be that any sorts of raises, et cetera, have their reviews, et cetera, done, so that everything will be in place at and for the new budget.
January one.
In January.
Yep.
And that is one single thing, not we do this and then also have some cola later. So that way it's easy, it's
I'm glad we're changing it to January one. Makes it so much easier.
Yeah, then there's no, like, let's pay back, and that's all.
That's always turns out to be a nightmare.
Yeah. We don't need nightmares.
Nope. I've been up now.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? You got my phone number. Or stop in.
We kinda know where you are.
Most of the time.
I, I don't think so. I, I'll probably talk to him at some point.
Oh, there's no doubt in my mind about that.
He'll find you.
All right. Do we have your budget present?
Thank you.
No, that's all they have.
Okay. That moves us on to old business or intent to cut. We
I have two intent to cuts for you to sign, and I have no reason to suggest that you don't sign them.
I assume these have gone through the normal review that Russ does?
Yes, they have. I am acting on his behalf, so. I believe it's basically the taxes have to be paid.
God, I can't read anymore. There you go.
I was gonna ask you.
Smile. Blue shirt looks good.
Well, thank you. I got a compliment from Robert Acosta on my shirt.
Watch it. Now you got one for me. Mine's more important.
Yeah.
I think it's before he signed. I think it's a different one?
Hmm, I do too.
Okay, just making sure.
Is that, well?
This, this is not the previous Dustin town owner.
No, that's another property owner.
Just making sure.
Who happens to have property in Dustin Road.
All right. I'll trade you.
Now, this one, they haven't filled out their address. What's up with that?
Oh, I don't know. Russ gave that to me, but
We'll make sure that that's
We can certainly put it in.
Yeah, cause that's, cause of being a tax document, they should have the year in here. We're really not supposed to as a town fill all that in, so.
Russ needs for the operation number, so we're not supposed to fill in the date?
Yeah, because, because it's, well, that's what I've been told, because it's a major tax document. We're not allowed to touch anything except what we fill in for ourselves, so.
Point taken.
Sign your life away, that's all.
Right, just have, make sure Russ has the landowner filled this in, or the, or the guide logging or whatever.
Sure. Thank you.
Not that I'm a stickler.
I'll just show you. You can try to do it all by yourself.
Actually, when you're in this town, I, I actually wrote the wrong year, and it got signed, and then they penalized me. So, make sure the year is right on the top, because, yeah, I've never had that happen thirty years, but anyways.
Is there anything further in there? Do we have contracts and such to consider that, uh, timber tax waiver? Or are we still waiting on?
I have a copy of the contract.
Okay.
And let me just show it to you. And then I'll wait to know if you think there's enough information.
What's this?
On that. That's for the project that is happening on Dustin Road with the, well, I guess it's also happening
We don't have to sign it though.
No, no.
Has it already been cut?
He just said, told me it was. And the other thing I might mention, that the tax has not been reported yet or calculated.
Right, cause it wouldn't be until they get all their slips filed.
Till we got the report, it would cut, yeah.
And on the intent to cut for Dustin Road, do we have one filled out, right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
So we, we need to get you a special one. Doesn't it feel better? To me, this reads that we shouldn't
Are you waiving it?
I just feel like
Because they're supposed to pay it, and then it comes to us, and we're still getting the
And of course, she's trying to tell me to do it early.
Am I reading there? I'm on August, or am I reading?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading that he's going, he's responsible, because that's the state law. I mean, we could probably agree to read it, but it sounds to me that his, his included payment.
It looks like it.
So I wasn't even at that.
So, so she, she and I both read this the same way, which is that based on the shall be responsible for payment of the timber yield tax complying with law provisions, that, um, it should not get waived because that is additional income that the
I really like.
That we should be receiving.
And that would be part of, you know, if somebody said it was going to be waived, it would be part of their number, in a sense.
Yeah.
So, okay, good, that's all that matters.
It's good to get there, but I can't give you a way to get there.
That was a lot.
But I'm glad, I'm glad it's done, and that it's now done, I think, correctly.
I hope.
So, all right, that moves us on to the next old business, which is the temporary occupancy permit.
That's for Mr.
Right in front of us. Sorry to have kept you waiting for so long.
Fine.
See you later, Rob.
Hi, Rob. I think I've done this stuff right. This is gonna be events, Josh is going to build in the house eventually, but I own it. The place. He's eventually gonna own everything. So we can get both names on this, cause I still actually own the place. So I really didn't know how to fill this out, so I didn't get both names on the place.
That's fine.
Yeah, if you have both names.
Yeah, cause it's applicant and then also occupant, so that makes perfect sense.
So that's how I did it. Well, we did it.
So the big question, which I don't have Russ here, but maybe he gave you the information, was that all of this was contingent upon having building permits.
I believe John has a building permit.
You've got all of that filed?
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Took us a while to get ahold of electricians and plumbers and
Yeah.
Yeah.
Today.
Yes, it is definitely a process, especially today when everyone's busy.
Well, I got signatures, and then I found out I had to have the license, copy of the licenses, so I had to run back and go get those and
Nothing's simple anymore.
Trying to get ahold of people. I don't answer cell phones, and I don't do this.
Yeah. It's nothing simple. We have to do anything.
So basically, this, this is the
I didn't know how you wanted to leave the date, so I didn't know the date.
And so, yeah, duration is start date immediate end date, and then the reason for the permit that's in there. How did we leave this? I know we left it that it was all contingent upon getting the building permit.
I believe that it was that you would grant the extension if there was a building permit.
Did we give a time?
For how long it would, it would be? Uh, I don't think you did, but I'd have to look, I'd have to go back.
So let's see, we're in November, so immediate blah blah. When were you expecting to be starting construction?
Well, we was hoping to get a foundation in this, this fall, but it didn't happen. So hopefully by spring, we're gonna get a, the foundation in, and start building in the spring, but that's our plan.
Okay. So if that's spring, then
The wells all end, the septic's all end.
Ninety days doesn't really cut it, and which is the kind of typical extension.
Well, cause it does say on there, if you have a building permit, under, it says it under the ninety days.
Ninety days.
Then for maximum, ninety days in any calendar year, may grant longer, right, the situation, the, right. So my, my point was that the ninety days doesn't actually get you enough.
Correct, yeah, because of the winter.
He was gonna do another two-year extension, I believe, was what the original thing was, but
I'm pretty sure it wouldn't have been two years, but
But I don't remember.
Certainly doesn't make sense to do ninety days and end before you could even possibly really start construction in a sane way.
I mean, I'd have to go back to the last
Must be in the notes, wouldn't it be in one of our notes?
The meeting we had, it was gonna give me another
Our last notes were that we weren't gonna consider it until there was a building permit. But now there is a building permit, so we're considering it, and how long it should be to make sense.
And maybe Russ knows when to pull aside.
Oh, wait a minute.
I believe he does.
Yeah.
We had we just did one of, uh, thing on this. So through winter
You did this one for Rory Murphy.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
That's this one that
So that makes sense. Um, I would suggest that we match them. So that would be through May to show that he's actually continuing progress on it, and then
All through twen- to five, twenty-four.
With progress happening by May, like, having somebody hired to come in and put a foundation or whatever.
Yeah.
Then we can continue, uh, with the temporary occupancy permit. Obviously, the ninety days doesn't get us there, but if we do that to start with, um, that makes it easy to, there's progress, go ahead and stay. But not just, let's be here in two years again with the same waiting on, uh, things to happen. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Sure does. Well, I mean, and that's what they kind of said they're gonna do.
Right.
Get the foundation in in the spr- well, spring, May. And it's like, I think what he's saying, as long as we see that happening, then, right.
And even if it's not in, if they're like, here's the company and they're doing it on X day, like, that's fine. So I would suggest that we grant this with an end date of the same May first to be, uh, considered for renewal at that time, provided that there is further progress.
Can you, I second that.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if we were supposed to do that, or just write it down or and sign it, but, um
I was trying to figure out if it was a motion or not.
Are we supposed to sign it? Are we supposed to motion? Cause like, I see the other document, but I also don't see a place for us to sign either of these.
Well, I'm sorry that Russ isn't here, cause I'm not really familiar with this. Um, I guess it does say meeting date approved, and which was last meeting, but I don't see where your signatures go on this.
Yeah.
But I tell you, I think that I will be seeing Russ sometime before
So, so that's fine.
And I can always bring it back to you, but if you treat it as a motion, it would be official.
Yeah, but, so we just did the motion and approved it, uh, and based on the same dates, sorry to, to jump in the middle of this one. But I would move that we also accept the temporary occupancy permit application as described at the last meeting for Rory Murphy, to end at the same, uh, May first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, sounds good to me. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded? Marla?
Yep.
I did.
So that is a motion and second for both of them through the first of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Is there anything further we need to discuss about that, or that you'd like to bring up about that?
I could do that. I'd like to be able to get a copy of of that.
Absolutely.
I think we can handle that, but yeah, get your copy.
You know, that way I guess.
Yeah, I'll ask Russ it.
Yeah, I can pick it up Wednesday or something.
Okay, that's fine.
Make your open Wednesday.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we are, as far as I know. Come on down.
Moving right along then, that brings us to new business, the tax rate update.
Well, um, the tax rate.
Which I know a bunch of people were waiting for.
Yeah, I was too. Uh, you, you saw my email regarding where we are with the tax rate. We've got two things going on with the tax rate. We've got the rebound that the assessors are still taking appointments, or they're taking them this week. To speak with people and review people who want, who had questions on their assessment. Which is not really what's holding up the tax rate, cause I was going to go forward and then just make sure I had enough overlay. In the event the assessment changed. Um, however, that's not the best way to handle it, but I also would like to have some cash flow. However, uh, the school is not ready. And, um, they're, again, they're a big part of it, of course. And, uh, so Webster, Salisbury, Bosco, Win, Concord, and Loudon. And Andover cannot set their rate at the moment.
Fun.
We sound like the government.
Yeah. But anyway, that's not, and, and I'm not trying to use that as an excuse, but I have to have that, we have to have that rate for that.
We, we can't actually finalize the rate that people get taxed at until we know how much the.
Everything else is.
School has finalized as their rate through DRA.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate. Has the school given us, uh, or the DRA given us a estimated time the school will have that?
Well, I did speak to our DRA auditor, and I know I'm on, I'm on, uh.
And you, and you what?
Um. They were not hopeful soon.
Okay. So.
And I don't know, I guess they had said it was something to do with their auditors, but I didn't, I don't know.
I think something is to do with Andover too. Cause it was a controversy about how they're getting away with not paying.
There was that gentleman that came in and talked to you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know, maybe, maybe something like that.
I think it is something like that, somewhere in the back of my pea brain.
So, let, let me ask the question then. As we continue to be delayed in ability to set the tax rate, primarily because of the school. And we aren't out of money, but our cash flow is certainly getting lower. Um, and I don't believe we would actually be able to cover everything if we didn't get the taxes before the end of December. What are we supposed to do? And/or has the school told us that because it's their fault, we're just not paying the school until it's set?
I have told them I can't pay the. And, you know, I can't give, we can't pay what we don't have.
Is this unusual?
You know?
It should be.
It.
But it has happened with the school in the past.
It is a little unusual for, for this, for this long, yeah. Um, but no, we can't pay the school this month, that's for sure. Uh, I am hopeful, being, you know, Mr. Optimistic, that we would have a rate within the next two weeks. And Karen hates to send bills out that are due on Christmas Day.
But we, but in theory, we could at the next meeting set the rate and then.
I'm hoping, I'm, I'm really hoping, but again, I, it's out of my control.
Okay.
Yeah, something, you can't help, I mean.
What is the, if that continues to be delayed and we don't have cash flow to continue doing business appropriately. What does the DRA say we're supposed to do?
Uh, and if we need money, I would have to go to the treasurer. And we would have to come back to you with a plan of what we'd have to do, and we'd probably have to take a letter of credit.
So that would be where the TANs, for example.
Yeah, yeah, I, I prefer a letter of credit, that way we can draw what we need and not pay interest on stuff over and above. But, um, but I'm hoping not to have to go there.
Okay. Fun, yes.
Uh, quick question. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say I'm thankful.
I can't hear you.
Pardon?
I can't hear you.
Oh, can't hear me. I, I'm thankful that the fire department ordered a new stretcher. Because when the, when the rates came out about how much the, everybody's house was worth now. You know, everybody went up a hundred to three hundred thousand, you know, up, up above. And, you know, I, I mean, people are having strokes and just calling down dead from it. But are the other towns, did they all go up hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Of course they did.
So, so sort of, yes. The, I'll take a shot at this, I, I, I wasn't gonna do the whole thing unless we were actually setting a tax rate. Because then I could use the actual tax rate as numbers. Let's say the hypothetical, which isn't the case, but let's say the hypothetical that everybody's budget stayed the same. We didn't change, the, the school didn't change, even though I know they did. County didn't change, state didn't change, et cetera. If all of the budgets stayed the same. And all of the values in town went up, you know, let's say sixty-five, seventy percent. Your tax rate would be lower, your bill would stay exactly the same. But your valuation of your house and your assessment is now more accurate. The, and that's really all that changes. The assessment value is how we get our tax rate, which is per thousand of value. But it's not how we get what, what the amount that we have to collect for taxes is. That's all the budgets. So if the budgets stay the same, then as long, if everybody's houses appreciate the same, the bills stay the same. Not everybody's house will be exactly the same, so I'm sure bills would change slightly. But this is part of the every five-year requirement from the state to do full reval. And so neighboring towns may have done that reval last year or the year before. Or may be scheduled to do it in a couple of years instead of this year. So it may not match all of the neighboring towns for total assessed value across the town. The state uses an equalization rate, which ours had continued to get worse and worse. Uh, the last one, I think, was like sixty-one or something percent. So they were basically saying you're only assessed at sixty-one percent or so of your value. Uh, and that continued to get worse throughout the year, cause houses got more expensive. So now that the revalue's done, our equalization rate should essentially, and I say should, cause I think it's still the DRA's prerogative. Uh, but should basically be zero, should be like, we are, sorry, a hundred. We are then in theory accurately at our assessed value. In theory, that helps some because we don't have to apply that equalization rate to utilities. But it's a somewhat minor change, uh, because equalization rate is designed to make everything even out.
I mean, I'm concerned about people that were having a hard time now. With, and we don't know what the federal government's gonna do for the next year. I mean, what are people kinda, gonna do when, like you were saying, you know, you need, you need the taxes to commence so that you can pay all the bills? What are peo- what's gonna happen? I mean, this is just, and I don't expect an answer, cause there is no answer.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Not yet.
I just might mention that we know the amount of money that's needed for tax year twenty-three, and that's what this is.
Right, right.
Cause it's the amount that was appropriated. What might change it a little is if we have some more revenues that we weren't planning on, which would be nice. Because it's what we voted to spend, less the revenues and what has to be raised.
Right.
Um, and so when you have higher values in the whole town. I think last year, the whole town was valued at two hundred nineteen million or something along those lines. This year, I don't know the total yet, but I'm going to say we're at five hundred million. So that is a mathematical equation to get the rate.
Again, the bill would be similar, but the, the rate would be lower, so it would look better, but the bill is about the same. And I've done this a few times in different places, so I'll do it very short at this, this point. The town basically stayed flat, we, we actually reduced some things, but we basically stayed flat. Um, so the portion of that tax bill that comes to us, no matter what your valuation is. Uh, because the whole towns has changed, is about the same dollar amount. The school we know went up, uh, the county we know went up. I think the state went up too.
The state, yeah.
So the, the tax, the total tax bill will be higher, but it's, it's not gonna be sixty percent higher like people's valuations.
Yeah.
They, they don't match.
Okay. That, that's a fear that we, we need, we need a pat on the back to say, it's okay, it's okay.
Yeah. I, I would expect the rate to go up the standard three to five percent that it generally does.
Right.
Because most of the other places are doing that.
Okay.
And they're most of the taxes.
Okay. Now I have a completely, I'm gonna get up and leave right now, but I have a question because you used to be on the school board. And this is a question about what's going on with Merrimack Valley School District's name? How come it's valley all over the place?
I have no idea, I haven't been on a school board for three years.
All the signs say V, V, in, in small writing, Merrimack Valley graduate lives here. My granddaughter's got a shirt that says valley, field hockey. So what is going, who do we talk to about that?
I have nothing, that, call a superintendent.
Because that's.
Or go to one of the school board meetings.
Yeah, or that, go to the school board meeting.
They don't, they, I don't know if they've changed their format, but the last time I was at their, the school board meeting was for several of them last year. They don't, uh, like to answer questions on contact, but they do always provide at the end for public comment. And occasionally you'll get an answer versus we'll get back to you on that. That might be something that they would probably want to say, well, we did it because of this, and these are the great reasons or something, so hopefully they would answer it, but.
Cause we went, we got rid of anything to do with Merrimack Indians. And then they went to Merrimack Valley Pride, and then they had a male lion, and now they had to add the female lion. Because people were upset about it, and now the female lion is smaller, and they're upset about that. But in real life, the female lion is smaller.
You know, you're never gonna satisfy anybody, they're, everybody's looking for trouble, and our society is making it worse.
Yes, it is, definitely is.
If people can find a reason to fight, they're trying to, which is sad.
And minority is ruling now, so, you know, you're.
It is.
In my house, the female lion is not wanting to be, uh.
It doesn't mind what size she is, does it?
Well, thank you all very much.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I wanna real quick, how's your mom?
She's doing okay?
Cause the neighbors are asking, and I said I would ask.
Yeah, she's getting out of the house more, but she's doing all right.
Yeah, it's hard to get out of the house, so.
Yeah, you gotta want to.
Yeah, you do.
You don't move, you lose.
It's hard to get the incentive.
But thank you for asking, yes.
Hoping that she was doing better.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to do a quick mention that we did get the utility values.
Ah, yes.
And, and those were increased.
Which are definitely increased, and that is nice.
Yeah.
All right, so that moves us onto correspondence, which I thought you were gonna.
Well, we are there, yes.
That's okay.
Excuse me while I put my folders in one place. This, as you know, is a number eight. Well, we, we received a thank you note for the generous donation that you made, which I'm not sure if you knew, you made a hundred dollar donation in memory of Les Silver.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, okay, good, I wanted to make sure I had, cause I don't try to do things behind your back. To the Oxbows, and so we got a thank you note for that. We just had a question come up on the holiday pay for the police department. And in your packets, I had enclosed the November thirtieth, twenty twenty minutes. When there was a motion made of how to pay police officers that work on a holiday. And I thought it made sense that we should add that into our policies. In, in our policy book rather than have it buried in select board minutes.
I thought it was part of the, um.
Personnel policy.
I thought all of that was part of the personnel policy.
We don't really have police things in the personnel policy. And I've never seen the police department's personnel policy. Not that I've ever asked for it, but I'm, um, you know, but that might be a place to put it. But obviously, we have to know if, if we're paying people correctly.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, and it's already been approved, so this is just a little.
It's, it's, yeah, so it's just, it's just a housekeeping thing I'm trying to do.
That makes sense.
And I don't know, you know, I can see why you might not wanna, you know, we've, we've eliminated a lot of policies that were kind of like. Uh, day-to-day type things, like, you know, the chief taking a car home or something like that. Okay, let me find that out with, put it in their policy.
Okay.
And, uh, and then we'll, but anyway, it should be, it should be somewhere then to have someone. I was so thrilled because I said, oh yeah, I remember that happening.
And if they have a policy like that, that is, like, I would assume that a generic personnel policy is something that we should be able to have and publish? That might.
Of theirs, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure.
That might be a good idea.
I've never happened to ask for it, so they haven't told me they can, so.
So, so if that's the case, and we can publish it, then we can make sure that that's in there or suggest they include it. Which might help them get better candidates, uh, or more candidates.
Okay.
So, let, let's try to work with them instead of just signing it and throwing it on our, on our group of stuff.
That's fair enough.
And if they, if they don't have a place for it, then, yeah, we can go down this route.
Okay. We did get a letter from the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, they're doing a timber cut on a piece of property. And, um, I'm sure they're going to do it correctly, this was just the first notice. They don't have an intent yet. Uh, we got a letter from the DRA who has done this.
And I believe it said they were gonna open bids shortly.
Yes, yes.
For what?
Doing the foresting.
Oh, 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 okay.
You know.
Next week.
So, someone might know about this.
I know.
Yeah. We did get a letter from the DRA, they go out to check the accuracy of our information that we have on file. During the reval years to see if the assessors are doing their job. And there were no errors, and they pick a random amount, uh.
Wow.
Accounts, home, homes, map and lots. Sorry, it's getting late. But anyway, um. It was a very good report, there were no errors, and I was pleased to see that. Um, I got a letter from Bart Mayer, um, that Upton Hatfield is, is doing the, um. The, uh, tax case for public service, and I believe its tax years twenty seventeen and nineteen. And they're hiring Brian, um, Fark. Who I'm sure is very qualified, but I was a little shocked at the amount that it's gonna cost. It's gonna cost us, um, start, eight thousand dollars, starting a thousand dollars a month from, I guess, starting January through August.
How did they pick?
Plus another like two thousand, plus another five hundred or something.
You know, so anyway, I added, I mean, with the nineteen communities represented, or twenty communities represented, something like two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Wow.
And, and that's before accounting for additional time that might be spent in court.
Yeah, you know, and, and, and maybe.
Like it has a court.
Maybe Sensus would be the same type of pricing. And there was, it was interesting.
Have we asked him? Because we could opt out of this.
I thought about that, but I would not suggest that we did, because then we'd be on our own for this tax case. And it'd be.
Fair.
I'm sure we'd have a lot of expenses that. It's, it's bad enough, you know, I'm sorry to be complaining about everything with money tonight, but I just, I'm in the mood.
Oh, so you're right, like everybody else is.
But it would be, um.
Well, I guess our legal lane will have to continue to go.
What was interesting to me is that, um.
Or does this.
Sensus had sent us an. What was interesting to me is that, um, Sansucci had sent us an agreement for this, which I had not asked for. And so I was puzzled, so I called Upton Hatfield and said, we didn't, we didn't ask them to that, and don't sign it.
Really? Was it cheaper than the other one?
You know, I could look it up, but I don't know right off the top of my head, but.
Well, it couldn't have been much cheaper, cause you'd probably remembered.
Probably, you know, and I don't even know if it really specified any dollar amount in that, in that one. But anyway, there was a interesting email back and forth with, um, I think his name is Timothy Sullivan and Upton Hatfield. And, and Sansucci about, about this. And I think Sansucci is not happy that he wasn't given a chance to bid, and also we're his client. So, but that's not something I think that we need to do, and that's, you know, the, the only other thing is, is we did opt out of this. We've already put quite a bit of money into it. And, you know, we're be throwing good after bad, in my opinion. So, we're not, even, I'm hoping we'll win the tax case, and so we won't get further, further insults of this, but you never know what happens.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, cause there was a settlement about, well, the same stuff, uh, X number of years ago, that was a continual change and.
Yeah, we finished that, that was finished, but.
So they have to sue us again?
Yeah. Well, they, they put this, and I didn't understand the reason why, they delayed these cases in Superior Court. Because of that, they had some conflicting cases, and I don't know what that was, or what they mean by that, but. So here we are, four or five years later, I had no idea what this was when it came in, that, oh, by the way, we're, we're starting up your twenty seventeen abatement process again.
Oh, geez. Should be a limit.
A little crazy.
Well, it went, it went to Superior Court, so that's how they can do it, otherwise, usually when you, usually your abatement cases would, would end after one year, unless it goes to Superior Court.
Uh, what would we do without courts, my God, it'd save a lot of money.
So that was the correspondence I had, um.
So I also see, um, one to Russell about, that, uh, is about, uh, inventory returns?
Thank you, thank you, I, I, did I overlook that? There was someone that, that wanted some consideration about having their inventory penalty forgiven because they're in South Carolina or something, and the, and the mail is slow.
Oh, the mail was slow, really?
Yeah, so.
Well, so I'll, I'll read the, uh.
Thank you.
Current piece, which is, we currently reside, maybe I'll read it. We currently reside in South Carolina, where the mail is slower than molasses. As our understanding with the completed form was received in your office only five days late.
Oh, Ellen silly.
So, my question, which unfortunately, we don't have Russ here for. Would be, are we talking like it was actually postmarked a month early? Or is this an excuse, and it was actually postmarked like on the day or something, so there was no expectation it was gonna get here in the first place?
You know, and maybe we should just postpone this until next.
Cause I know he keeps that kind of information.
The envelopes, so, because it would show when the postmark was.
Right.
And he usually, um, he would, many of them come in after April fifteenth, but if they're postmarked the fifteenth, he would.
Right, kinda like, like, kinda like IRS does, if it's, you know, it's postmarked on the day that it's due, they.
It's like the IRS, yeah, right, exactly.
So, I, I would be, um, interested to know that before I would consider, uh, possibly granting any sort of.
Okay, well, why don't I bring it back to you next time?
Yeah, good idea. Because we need to be careful due to.
We, it's gotta be the same.
Somebody said he dropped it in the box.
Right, it has to be the same all the way across.
Have to be clear to everybody.
So, I, I just would say, as long as it's postmarked as the, the day.
Yeah.
Even that it's due, as long as you've got that on the.
I'm pretty sure he'll have that.
So. Okay. Uh, let's see, that was the policy. All right, and then, looks like it's on to minutes, I make sure that's the case, there's the agenda.
You had sent me an, uh, a.
So public comment that we don't have, but yes, go ahead.
Uh, you had sent me an email on minutes.
Yes.
The non-public sessions, I adjusted those, I fixed those.
Okay.
Uh, so we didn't list the person.
So, in order to make sure that everybody understands, uh, let me quickly bring that up, so that I can, uh. Say that, because it would be adjustments per me. So I suggested that two changes be made to our minutes. In the public minutes, um, when we were talking about driveways, uh, I had suggested a temporary access, not a temporary driveway. One word, one word change, but definitely a different meaning. Um, and in the non-public, uh, I said we should strike the name and use only, that it was a code enforcement update on. The, uh, a property in Deer Meadow, uh, because we've previously had the standard of including names. Of current or prior public figures that were elected only during minutes for contentious items. Uh, such as with previous issues, uh, and not including general public. Uh, and so, being that this was public and was under the purposes of, um. I can't even remember the word for it. Public perception, um.
Yeah, reputation.
Reputation, thank you. Uh, I thought it made sense that we should not include the name, uh, in those. Even though they are non-public sealed minutes, um, that was my suggestion for the updates. So those are my two amendments to the minutes. Did you get to?
So it sounds good to me, I'll second that.
Read through the rest of the minutes? Anything else?
Good to me.
All right, so she's already seconded, but I would move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, speaking of the fact that we now have a non-public slash sealed set of minutes, I know there's some sort of, you have to track them, whatever thing at this point. We should look at the ones over the past year or two. I don't, we haven't done any of them, so it should be pretty short.
I don't think you'll have too many, and I do have that on my to-do list, and eventually I will actually do it.
But we might want, we might wanna bring that to our next meeting that's not with Hopkinton.
Okay.
All right, so that is minutes.
No distress at all.
Uh, so signing of documents and motions.
So you don't have the manifest, I haven't done that, we're on the offset, but I do have, um, the Pittney Bowes bill, I think that was.
You can tell it's gotten chilly out.
I guess the credit cards don't.
No, am I the only one?
It is, it is cool, maybe the heat's shut down.
Which I'm fine, but I'm usually not the one that gets very cold.
I left the air conditioning on.
Okay, good. Yeah, they're trying to check you out there.
I keep looking at the clock, and I'm thinking, what?
Cause you didn't, you didn't fix the clock.
Well, it's kinda, it's really in sad shape, it's not even, it's not even hour, so I need to take it down and see if it needs a battery.
Time change, like.
Yeah, we change by half an hour.
Yeah.
In this town. We are special.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have anything further for that?
Um, I would like to have a non-public session under RSK nine one eight three, section two A, personnel.
Personnel, all right. Any further comments before we consider that?
No, that's good to know.
For the purpose of everybody else, we will immediately adjourn following the non-public session, so there will not be a continued stream and nothing to look back towards.
I always feel like we should say, oh, we're signing off.
Yeah, so I would move that at eight fifty, we enter into non-public session.
I second that.
For personnel, seconded by Merle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.